We ready?
Yes, we are now recording.
Okay. We'll call this meeting to the March 25th regular meeting of the North Bend Planning Commission to Order at 7:02. Let's do the roll call first. Let the record show. Let's see. Commissioner Bush?
President.
Commissioner Bovers?
President.
Commissioner Mo?
President.
Commissioner Torgeson?
President.
Commissioner Blankel, yes. Commissioner Greenberg is not going to attend, I understand. And Commissioner Tao is not going to be able to join us tonight. So we do have a quorum. And what I need is, let's see, let the roll call show that all members are present with the exception of Commissioner Greenberg and Commissioner Tao, who are both absent. The next thing on the agenda is item number two, which is the opportunity for a public comment on non-agenda items. Each person that wishes to speak gets three minutes. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
Sure, this is Mike Thomas.
Hi, Mike.
Hey, Mike.
Can you give us your address and?
Sure, Michael Thomas, 1231 La Forest Drive SE. Just a note for the record and notice for commissioners and those attending, I'm recording video and audio of the meeting as a courtesy also for any telephonic participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, there we go. Now we're on to item number, anybody else? Is there anybody else that has come in? Anybody, Mike, on there? No, okay.
There's one other person, but she hasn't said that she wanted to speak.
Okay. Item number three then is the approval of the minutes of the March 11th 2021 Planning Commission meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments, clarifications, or adjustments to the minutes? None? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
This is Commissioner Bush. I make a motion to approve the March 11th minutes.
I will second that, Commissioner Mo.
Commissioner Mo seconds. We have a motion made by Commissioner Bush and a second by Commissioner Mo. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show the motion has passed by a vote of one, two. Can I vote myself or not? Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, no, five. With no one saying, no one opposing. Okay, that was quick. Let's type it right down to the heart of our meeting tonight, which is item number four, the introductions of the new North Bend Municipal Code 18.13 Special Districts and the repeal of MBMC 1810.025 Special Districts. Can we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Chairman, Commission. Staff is looking at cleaning up a part of the language within our municipal code as it relates to the overlay districts. As you may or may not be aware, we have quite a few overlay districts, both in the text and on the zoning map. These overlay districts include the transitional landscape area, critical areas overlay, Tanner Landing, East-North Bend, Tanner Junction, Neighborhood Business Residential, and urban separator overlay. Each has a different description within the ordinance and different area. With this new proposed code, we are creating a process for a master plan project. So basically, instead of having these overlay zones that just have a couple paragraphs or aren't very clear or only cover a portion of the development, we're proposing a process for an entire master plan for any area that wishes to be part of this master plan overlay district that already exists in our code. So this new process that you'll see from the document includes what need, it has a clear process on what needs to be approved in order to have a master plan overlay district. It tells you what needs to be included. So it has a purpose, which is to provide a means for creating a master plan development in any zoning district and to allow for the application of flexible development standards to encourage and foster creative and innovative planning practices that will result in a well-designed, efficient, and functional planned development. So this is basically creating a planned development area for any developer that would like to do this, but specifically, we're going to keep it for some overlay zones that I'll get into a little bit later. We're also proposing to remove overlay zones that don't make sense anymore. The two big ones that don't make sense anymore is the transitional landscape area and the critical areas overlay district. Both of those overlay districts are spelled out, the regulations and other parts of our municipal code. We don't need an overlay zone anymore, and we don't even actually show it on our zoning map because it's already covered and spelled out within other sections of the municipal code. So we're suggesting to remove that one. We are also suggesting to remove the Tanner Landing overlay zone. That one is completely incorporated into Dollgren, the Dollgren project as well as the park. And part of this process with the overlay zones is actually a three-part process that we'll go through to update these overlays. First will be to look at this municipal code, and if it goes through and gets adopted, then we've got a process. Then when we come back with the comprehensive plan update for this year, that was part of your docket approval, we'll actually look at the maps within both the comprehensive plan and the zoning map and remove the physical overlays off the map. And then for the ones that are going to be possibly rezoned instead of having an overlay, because for instance, the Tanner Landing one, it doesn't make sense to have an overlay on a developed project. It's a high-density project. Why don't we just designate a high-density instead of overlay? So we're going to go through and come back and propose a cleanup at a later time. And so we'll have a public hearing and a process as we talk about the actual map amendments, where tonight we're just talking about the language we're proposing to put into the code for master plan processes. And then the third one would be come back and re-imman this code if we remove any overlays that are still in here that we can't remove until it's removed from the map. A good example of that might be the urban separator overlay. We have an urban separator overlay, and really, the only thing that is different than the underlying land use is the allowable land use table within the business zone, within the commercial zone within that overlay. There's no reason we can't just call it a new business district instead of having it as an overlay. So it accomplishes the same thing without confusing people. Because if you were trying to look at the original land use and lose a land use table, well, which uses are allowed, which ones aren't? It's a little confusing. These overlay districts can get very confusing when you have a lot of different things with different rules, and they're not processed the same way. So our basically proposal is to clean this up, have a single process for master plans, their overlay district, have a process for approving these master plans. And so it's very clear that this area follows this master plan and doesn't necessarily confuse people when they look at it. So we're trying to make it simpler, clarify, clean it up, and also make a much more creative process for master plan projects. So as I go into the, let me go ahead and share my screen so you guys can see the code that you obviously, you know, that the commission has. But if anyone in the public would like to look at this as we go through it. Let me zoom in a little. So as I talked about, we got the purpose. It's, you know, we want to promote any infill and also economic and efficient use of land. This is applicable to really any designation to propose an overlay. It does go through the process of a zone change, basically adding the overlay to the map. We are proposing a minimum land area requirement of 10 acres. However, we allow for a smaller review process if it's determined that it is of public interest to have a master plan there, that there's a good reason, a better development for it. The process goes through a similar process that a zoning code amendment would go through, would come through the Planning Commission for a public hearing, and it would go to council for approval. So, and then we actually are proposing you codify the master plan. And I'll show you kind of what we did with the existing master plans at the end of this document. The contents of the master plan includes things like their existing conditions. Where is it located? What resources are there? What existing buildings are there? Any easements? Any description or characteristics of the property and surrounding properties? Detailed description of the transportation system within and adjacent to it. Then you get into the actual master plan. What's the underlying zoning district? So what are the different districts that are under it? What are the mix of uses, including the number of units and square footage devoted to each area and location within the site? What are the permitted uses? Are there different permitted uses than the underlying district? Now, to be clear, that the intent of the underlying zone has to stay the same. They can't have a residential underlying zone and put a commercial project. That would require an actual zone change along with the master plan overlay. So you can have varying uses, but they still have to meet the intent. Again, density, same thing, must follow the density by phase and at full buildout. So it allows for a little bit of adjustment to some of those, you know, you might have a corner of one parcel that's a little denser than another, but as long as the overall density of that phase and the overall project meets the density requirements, that would be something that would still meet these requirements. It includes what site improvements they're going to be putting in, what infrastructure is needed, transportation, what protections for environment, any connectivities or buffers that are needed from the surrounding use, and what the design standards are. A big part of this project is for people to be very unique and different than what our code might require. Or maybe they want a community that, that maybe they want a community that looks similar or has different mix of uses closer to each other than maybe the code allows. And so this would allow them to put, you know, different kinds of architecture, what the design standards and building materials they want for this specific project, landscaping type, pedestrian circulation, bicycle parking, signs. A lot of these, especially when it involves commercial, usually has a sign program that are more restrictive sign regulations than the city code. It might say that, you know, they want specific colors within their center on all individual channel letters, and they want them all to match up so that the center has an identity. It's not required, but it would be something that would be available to them. It would tell us what the phasing is for implementation, what the full buildout will look like, and how they're using any innovative techniques on the project, as well as the environmental. It'll have development standards, you know, are there any different development standards from the rest of the code? Usually, in consideration of alternative development standards, a master plan must include some sort of innovative planning technique. So basically, if we're going to give you something a little bit different than what we might normally require, what are you doing for this community? Are we creating a mixed-use development? Are we creating an enhanced open space or recreational amenities? Are we doing additional public parkland or trail corridor? Is there enhanced stormwater mitigation, additional energy efficiency? All sorts of different options. Or is it just a good economic opportunity? Is it, is it makes sense for business and economic opportunities, a good economic development? The master plan will identify the advantages of this master plan. Why is it good for the community? And then we include in the code kind of criteria for approval. We also talk about the process if someone wants to change the code, wants to expand the master plan area or amend it, how it's vesting, and what the duration of the master plan is. The reason we usually put a duration in case they don't build right away. We don't want a master plan that sits on a vacant lot for 20 years and never gets built. It'll usually get outdated if that's the case. And then here at the end is where I talked about where we're proposing to keep a description of three of the current overlay districts. It very much simplifies what's in their existing code because we expect that the East-North Bend Master Plan Overlay District and the Tanner Junction will follow these new rules when they are ready to develop. So we put a description of what we were looking for in our original, what the original purpose of putting these in the overlay district, but we removed all of the other requirements. We want them to come to us and tell us what makes sense and go through a process through the Planning Commission and council for what they're proposing and how they're proposing to develop these areas. And I can show, I can pull them up on our zoning map as well. The Neighborhood Business Residential Overlay District is a little bit different. We kept all of the language that's in this one because we think this is one of the ones that once we update the comp plan and zoning map, that we probably are going to be looking at adjusting the zoning so that it meets the same as the mass, this overlay zone. And basically, it's saying that we can, it's currently a business district, and we put an overlay for residential. A lot of these in this area is already all residential. It doesn't make much sense not to clean it up and put it residential within this small area. The last thing that would need to be cleared up that it discusses within there is updating chapter 20.01.004, which is just our approval framework, adding this section requiring the special district master plan and master plan amendments to our chart of the process for approval. Let me go ahead and share the zoning map with you guys. So this is our zoning map. I'm going to try and zoom in here to the table of contents where you can see the different overlays. You see the Neighborhood Business, Tanner Junction, East-North Bend, Tanner Landing, and the Urban Separator. As you can see from the map, the Urban Separator takes up this kind of big area.
Rebecca, do you see the same screen that you're seeing?
Oh, you can't. I'm sorry. Hold on. How about now? Are you able to see the map?
Yes.
Perfect. I apologize about that. So we've got these three overlays listed in our legend here. And this is the Urban Separator, as you can see here. And if you look at the description and the list of allowable uses, these two blue, Neighborhood Business, are the only areas that differ from the underlying district. So one of the suggestions when we go through the process is at the next, at a future public meeting, again, when we do the comprehensive plan update, maybe we put this as Neighborhood Business too. Or maybe we call it something a little bit different. Because the only difference is, is the allowable uses from the Neighborhood Business. So we still want to keep the hard work that the Planning Commission and the council did to create a zone with the uses that they want to see in this area, but it doesn't really need to be an overlay district that could cause complications when people are looking at what they can and can't do in that area. And we've got Tanner Landing and Tanner Junction here. And then we have that Neighborhood Business Residential here. And when we have the East-North Bend here. And that's all I really have. I wanted to leave enough time for you guys to ask any questions you might have about this and anything you see in there that you want to see changed as we move forward to the public hearing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Wait, I guess I'm having a hard time visualizing what a master plan development looks like. I'm thinking like the Izequah Highlands, and that's a really, I don't know if that's one, but it might be a really large one, but it's this sort of, it's like on the level of a small city. And then it's got its own like pool or man-made lake and golf course. And so is that?
That's a very large example of what could be a master planned area. I've seen master plans as small as commercial centers because they wanted a unique experience, a unique walkable, something a little bit different, a specialized architecture. So I've seen very small master plans, and I've seen big residential master plans. I've seen residential master plans that are 4,000 residential units in the master plan. And within that master plan, they provide, the reason it's a master plan is because they're providing different, all different sized units. They might have some cottage houses in one planning area and then larger lot residential in another, then maybe live-work in another. So it's a way, you know, when you looked at the, here's an example. We proposed that new medium-density residential. And part of that was to get a good mix of uses. Some of the codes said you couldn't put, you know, more than two of the same use. Someone might go, well, but I have this really neat idea where we create these different clusters of uses that are intercombined with walking trails. So let's do it as a master plan. And then you guys would review it as a whole project instead of just one developer. And so it can be all different sizes.
A nice local example, Heather, would be Kimball Creek Village in Snoqualmie. So that's at the base of the Snoqualmie Parkway where there's the commercial center, there's the doctor's office, and there's a mix of different types of housing. So all of that was developed, I believe, by Cam West Homes and then a commercial developer together, but all done at once. Instead of in the context of this is single-family zoning, it was a real mix of uses.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that, Mike. That gives me a really nice visual of what we want to do here. That helps a lot. Thank you.
Well, a master plan is not, correct me if I'm wrong here. The master plan would not be constrained by existing zones. So if you had a residential that the master plan overlapped into a commercial, would that still be allowed?
So they would, because it requires a zoning for the overlay, they would have to, it does need to be in compliance with the intent of the underlying zone. So we would be able to amend the zoning map and comprehensive plan at the same time we were doing a master plan if they wanted to do a mix with both commercial and residential. So they wouldn't necessarily be able to completely override the underlying land use. They would have to do an update to do that, to completely override it.
Okay, we're not creating a loophole where someone can change it?
No. No, they would still have to change, they would still have to go through the comp plan and zoning map amendment if they're not following the intent. So residential needs to stay residential, commercial needs to stay commercial. What uses and lot sizes and designs within that intent, commercial and residential can be adjusted within the master plan.
And there's no backdoor to it at all either. It all goes through the public process, just like any zoning amendment would.
And we're proposing where I showed you those paragraphs of intent. Those are, we, one of the reasons we renumbered it is to give each master plan its own section so that we could put the entire master plan within the municipal code. So it's there and available for anybody who wants to see what's allowed, what's not allowed. So it is truly a municipal code amendment to add these or adjust or amend these master plans.
Well, I had three little things, quick little things on. Let me come to the top one. 181320, master plan overlay districts. I'm looking at page six of the PDF. Item number 4B. At the end of that paragraph, it talks about neighborhood meeting notices, noticing procedures shall be defined by the director. Is that process defined somewhere already in the code that wouldn't be just by the director? Like, is there already a preset defined way to do that?
No, I don't think we have any current requirements for neighborhood meetings. So it's really an added extra that we're proposing. I think the idea is, the reason it's being defined by the director is because we don't know, one, how big the development is. We don't, there could be a lot of factors. We may want to notice, you know, 300 feet around it, or we may want to notice 1,000 feet for that meeting. We probably would stick to at a minimum our normal noticing requirements, but we wanted to leave it open to be able to increase the noticing requirements if necessary for a proper neighborhood meeting if it has a bigger impact or could have a bigger impact to a bigger set of community members.
Okay. Next page, page seven, item 6E, number two. Just a quick spell check there. It's on the second line of that. It says, "and a plan," just meaning a space.
Space, yep. Thank you.
And lastly, on page nine, number 11. Typical lawyer speak, but do we need to put a reasonable in that sentence? Shall I have the reasonable authority to impose any reasonable conditions?
I mean, it already says necessary to mitigate. So I think it's already got by necessary to mitigate. It's covered, but if you guys want to recommend to add reasonable, we can.
It's just one of those, you know, lawyer speak things that I don't like the idea of just giving free rein. I get what you're saying with necessary, that helps too. But usually you want, you're told to add that reasonable. Not a big, not a thing I'm set in stone on.
Okay. We did send it to the city attorney's office to review.
So are you wanting to put, get the word, remove the word "any" and put reasonable in there? Is that what, no?
No, it's just a recommendation. If it's already been passed through the lawyers and they okay that, then that's fine.
Okay.
I'm just used to seeing that, that's all.
All right.
Anyone else have any comments, concerns? No, everyone's ready to bring it to the public hearing?
Can you do, I do, I have one thing. You know, I'm, can you pull your map back up? I just need to be really clear on the area. When I look at the maps, I, I just, I need someone to say, well, that's where, that's where that is. I can follow the process down North Bend Way. And I tried to do it today, and I just wasn't sure I was looking at the right thing. I don't know if that'd be helpful to anybody else, but to me, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I can definitely pull the map back up, but I just want to make it clear that this proposal does not include any changes to the map at this time. The map changes will come at a future meeting when we talk about the comp plan update and zoning map update. So that's, we're looking at that in like three or four months to bring that back as we start preparing for our comp plan amendment for the year. All of the ones that you guys looked at that we're adjusting are like our park zoning, making sure that all the parks are identified as parks. So we'll bring all of the map stuff back at the same time. This is purely the municipal code document at this time. But I can, I'll still bring it up to show you so you have an idea. You guys are able to see the map?
Not quite. Oh, there we go.
Okay. So anywhere that you've got these different color lines, like this one is the East-North Bend Master Plan Overlay?
Is that the Truck Town area up there where the middle school is up there?
Yes, it's where we're talking about the National Guard and Truck Town area, correct?
Okay. Okay.
And then these are the two Tanner. This one's Tanner Junction, and this one's Tanner Landing.
Okay.
You've got the Urban Separator way up here.
And Tanner Landing is the Dollgren Project?
Correct.
Correct. I have to check which one was Junction and which one was Landing. Yes, Tanner Landing is the Dollgren Project. So you can see how that's kind of confusing. If someone were to look at this map, you know, the underlying, as we talked about, kind of the underlying land use is different with this process of overlay zones. They were able to add an overlay zone for something that's completely different than what was originally called for in the original land use plan. So we're trying to clean that all up, clear it up, make it easier to understand for anyone just looking at the map what uses should be there.
Are you guys also trying to sort of foster the development of more master planned communities? Do you envision having more of them in North Bend?
I, we are, one of the ones, you know, this idea kind of came up when we were talking about the National Guard site. So we expect them to go through this process, and we thought it made sense for the other vacant areas. And that's why we kind of, the two areas that we held on to- And that's why we kind of, the, the, the two areas that we held on to with just a purpose, we want them to go through the process before they develop, but we wanted to leave it open for others. I don't really know how many we're going to get. I don't know how much, how much we have of 10 acres that people might want to get creative with. It might just only be the two for 20, 30 years. We just wanted to kind of allow that creativity without this, I hate to say it, funky overlay zones that we have now, you know, weird, different uses overlaying the original land use. So, you know, it's just kind of a, an unusual way. I think it was two directors processed these or created these. So I'm just trying to kind of backtrack it, clean it up. You know, I've heard multiple times, people tell me that, you know, if you ask two different planners, what can be done in these, some of these overlays, you might get two different answers because it's confusing. So I, I'm trying to fix that. I don't want it to be confusing. I want everyone to know what's supposed to go in any area, so.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Suzanne, any comments from you?
Oh, no, I'm just actively listening.
Okay. That's it?
Yes, that's it.
Everybody's feeling like we've got something here and we, okay, all right.
From the staff perspective, I just want to say I'm very grateful for this amendment for just the reasons that Rebecca's talking about. So very often we'll get a phone call from a prospective developer who says, I'm interested to do this. Can you tell me if I can do this on this area? And we would have to chase all sorts of rabbit holes through the code because it wasn't very obvious. You'd have to go to the overlay and then the overlay has various provisions based on where you're at within that overlay. And it was a little bit tricky to find your way through all that. And so this is really a great cleanup, not just for the public, but for staff administering it as well.
Good to hear.
It makes it more readable and more accessible and I'm all for it.
Good. So we made our comments. No more? Are we, everybody comfortable with? Got a second thought you want to throw out there? Certainly can. Okay. Is there anything? Thank you, Rebecca. That's great. And I feel the same way, Mike, I echo Mike's comments. You, with the overlay stuff, when, when you talk to people and they don't, nobody really understands why the overlay is there or what that's going to do, or it could scare it. You think, oh, I think I know what's happening. And then you get a notice about an overlay and you panic because that's not what you thought was going to be in your neighborhood. So this is good. I, I think this is overdue, I guess I should say, but very, very helpful to you and to our community and to future people that want to come here. So is there anything the commissioner staff would like to add before we adjourn? Well, I have something. On the bottom of our meeting thing, we will be meeting on April, what did we decide? April 8th, is that right, Mike? We're going to write it online. We put on the thing, it was March something, but.
Yeah, that's just a carryover from the last agenda. April 8th, the next meeting. And yeah, on future agenda items, we have noted there a potential development agreement for that senior housing in west North Bend Way. That may not be coming to you at that point. We're still waiting for submittal from the applicant for materials for that before we can bring that to you. So just depending on whether or not those get submitted in time.
Okay.
And so to make clear to that, to the public, the public hearing has been advertised for that April 8th agenda. So this was the introduction and we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting.
Right.
Public hearing for the, at Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it wasn't clear. That was, it looked like it was today was the public hearing from the agenda.
I apologize.
Error on the agenda there.
Anything else we have? I want to thank the people who, the commissioners who made it to the meeting on Tuesday night. I know we had two this week and it's okay if you didn't. I'm not, I'm not calling anybody out. I'm just saying, want to thank those that came and attended at the invitation of our city council. And it was, it was a good meeting. We talked a lot about the changes a little bit on the code or the, what we wanted to for the downtown area and lots of comments. So we'll see how that unfolds, but anyway, we're, we did it and apparently they would like to do some more of these. So we'll see if we get invited back or we invite them to us, one or the other. We can try that. And I want to thank Commissioner Tao for sending an email to let us know he's not coming. And that's really helpful because we do need a quorum to vote on these things. And if we don't have a quorum, I assume we still have a meeting, but we're, we don't have the power to do anything. So it's real helpful that you let Mike or any, any of us know if you can't make the meeting. Not a problem.
The more you notify, the better. That way if someone misses it, someone else catches it.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Was the work study on Tuesday, was that recorded?
I believe it was. I didn't, wasn't involved in the hosting the meeting, so I don't know if it was recorded, but I think they probably recorded all of it.
Mike, we usually. Go ahead, Dana, you unmuted and then remuted there.
Oh, I was just going to tell you, usually they do record audio. I, I will find out if it's been uploaded yet.
That would be excellent. Thank you.
Anything else? Do we, are we ready to call for a motion to adjourn tonight? Do I hear a motion? A motion to adjourn?
This is Commissioner Torrisson. I will motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second Commissioner Bovers.
Thank you. It's been Suzanne, Torrisson made the motion to adjourn, so second from Commissioner Bovers. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank, we're adjourned, no opposition. Thank you very much for coming tonight. And thank you, Michael, for attending.
Confirm it's April 8th, you're going to hold the public hearing in Planning Commission on this, correct?
That's correct.
Looked like city councils also called it potentially, but anyway, thanks, thanks for the clarification. I was going to speak on that topic, but thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.